A meeting to order, please stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thanks for coming, everybody. I think today might be our last day of 60-degree weather for a while, huh? And, oh, you know what today is?
Monday.
What's today? Monday, today is the start of Michigan State basketball season tonight.
That's better than a football.
Thank God.
Do you have the football players?
Yeah, exactly. Well, actually, one football player does play on our basketball team.
We lost Nebraska by three points last week.
That's right.
Point blowout.
All right, roll call, please.
Cindy Valentine here. Chris Oregan.
I'm here.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Here.
Ernie Bryson.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Here.
Maureen Bory.
Here.
John DeBoyer.
Here.
Okay, we're all here. Uh, bill's payable, entertain a motion.
Fellow trustees, I'd like a motion to approve bill's payable in the amount of $135,069.80.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Chris Oregan.
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Yes.
Ernie Bryson.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Motion passes. All right, next we have our supervisors' report. Uh, let's see. We had, actually, I had a lot of talks with our local DNR about the conditions and specifically at St. John's Marsh, but with all the frag mighties in the area. And, um, I told them we're going to, uh, uh, where I was gonna ask the board to, uh, support a resolution demanding that the state do something to control the frag mighties on their own properties. And I have had discussions, uh, with the DNR about having a town hall meeting concerning St. John's Marsh and the frag mighties. Uh, in fact, I just had another discussion, about a half hour talk with them today. Uh, we'll probably be looking early spring, and we'll have it right on site, um, at the marsh. So, uh, stay tuned to that, but I want to put together a, uh, resolution saying, you know, they gotta do something about these frags. Uh, the state of Michigan owns over half the, um, property in, uh, in Clay Township, and they spend zero on frag mitigation. And last time I checked, I think they, I was told that 18% of our total property of Clay was inundated by frag mighties, so it's a, I mean, in my mind, we're ground zero. So, we're gonna try to put some heat on that, on them. Our water department did a fine job, they finished the water line extension on Columbine. It's pretty much done, except for some restoration and landscaping. Uh, that went fairly smooth, and I could tell. Pearl Beach Bureau project is moving forward. Uh, since DTE has taken so long to, uh, get electricity to the bathroom, we're gonna winterize it so we don't have issues of freezing. And they fixed the one, the problem with the asphalt. It was a really cool process, instead of cutting it out and milling it out and putting new in, they actually had this, um, uh, tractor come out. It would heat, this machine would heat the surface of the asphalt to 3,000 degrees. And make it so soft, then they'd rake it out, and they put more material in and filled it in and rolled it out. Came out really good. I've never seen that done before, and, uh, still, you know, getting some, uh, handicap parking signs, lines put in and signs. And I think we did put some signs up today, and the wooden fence someone backed into. We, I believe that was fixed today, too. I did talk to a few people, concerned citizens, about Clay not opting out of the county 911 dispatch protocol. They gave me some additional information and viewpoints. I sent that up to Ken Cummings from TriHospital, uh, see what he takes up on it. Once I get that back, I'm gonna send it to our board to see if we wanna revisit that or not. But we did, uh, pass not to opt out, and it was a split decision, so. Uh, let's see. Oh, we have a new, we're getting a new generator that will service, um, the police station and our office building. Uh, we're waiting to schedule to be installed. However, when it's being installed, we're gonna have to cut the power to the office building. Uh, we do, we will have a backup generator for the police to keep them in operation. They said they, for some reason, that we couldn't get a generator for this side. So, we're gonna be, probably be closed a day, maybe two, because there'll be no power. Not sure when that's gonna be yet. We gotta schedule it with DTE. Working on securing our $2 million from the state for the San Souci wastewater treatment plant, um, project. And, um, doing, and on the flood plain or the flood mitigation, or wetland mitigation with the state. It's, uh, it's been frustrating, to say the least. We've looked at several sites. Uh, and, uh, I thought they were good, but, you know, Eagle would come back and say, no, it's not ideal, it's not special. Try again, and, uh, we're actually now looking on the mainland. And, uh, we're gonna propose a site, which I hope they really take, that we do a habitat restoration behind the high school, because we can turn it into a school project then, too. And the schools is willing to work with us and allow us to do it there, uh, which would be great, I think. There's also on that, was informed by Senator Hertel's office. We were trying to sponsor legislation to allow Clay to create a second DDA, which would, um, allow us to create another district over on San Souci on the island. However, he told me that that, that legislation probably will not hit the floor until spring. So, it's one of those things, you hurry up and wait. Still working on updating our water ordinance. The attorney's reviewing the rest of our ordinance to see if there's anything we need to be tweaked before we move forward. Been having some organizational meetings with the new wastewater treatment plant authority. Still waiting for St. Clair County to approve it. Our first meeting in December, I'd like to, uh, um, bring to the board appointments who's gonna serve on the board for Clay. And Elgin Mac and Ira are going to do the same on their first meeting of December. The Colony Tower turns 100 years old in 2025. And, uh, I figured, you know, I think the old girl needs a facelift for her birthday. If you get there close, there's, you know, big chunks of rust and the paint's peeling and everything. So, I'm actually, uh, went out to get, um, quotes to do a, uh, a light structural assessment of it and, um, estimates on getting it repainted, so. They will manage that whole, whole process. You know, they gotta check first, check if there's lead in the paint, uh, and some other things in it, and, uh, but, uh, it's been, John, do you know when it was painted last? It's gotta be 25 years.
I was just thinking about that. I would say at least 20.
I, I, it was, yeah, around 2000 or maybe in the 90s.
Yeah, I think it was in the early 2000s.
Yeah, so. But, yeah, I'd like to have them take a look at, make sure everything inside's up, you know, in good, good condition, too. Uh, let's see, I've been working on a lot of light issues. Uh, we've been shopping hard for, um, healthcare insurance. And, um, probably in the next week or so, I'm gonna set up a meeting with the board members with our, uh, our, um, help the insurance guy to review what our options are going forward. And, let's see. This week, this will be fun. Uh, presenting all the proclamations recognizing Joanne's, uh, Joanne Sherkey. Um, I have a proclamation for her service in Clay Township. I have proclamations from the US Senate, the US House of Representatives, state of Michigan, and the county, and plus our own. And we have, um, a flag that was, it's gonna be given to her, that was flown over the US Capitol in her honor. And Lisa McLean gave me a handwritten, personal letter to Joanne, too. So, I'm gonna present that here, coming up the next couple, three days, to her. I hope everyone had a good Halloween. I know I, with Rotary, I cooked and passed out 1,000 hot dogs at the bonfire. And we got rid of every, every one of them, so it's a good thing. All right, that's all I have.
Can I just ask you, um, the meeting for the healthcare, not, you're gonna talk to us next week, but it won't be next week for the meetings, right? Because I'm gonna be gone from the 15th to the 19th on vacation.
Um, no, it'll, I'm hoping it'll be this week, actually.
All right.
Okay? I can let you know, and we can set up more than one, too, for sure.
Maybe we can talk about the water ordinance, too, because I had some questions about that. If we can talk about both, that'd be great.
Okay, I sent the emails out on the changes on that couple.
So, just contact you directly?
Three weeks, yeah. Three or four weeks ago, I did.
Yeah, I've been looking at it.
All right, yeah, okay. Uh, next we have public comments. Any public comments, please?
Brian Kleinga, 9032 Field Road, can I approach the bench and give each one of you a?
Sure.
So, everything in yellow is an eagle bay of wetland over on the 9034 address. Each and every one of you here are all directly responsible for the destruction of this wetland, either by allowing it to happen or by not voicing your opinion. Multiple of you guys were all out there, y'all looked at the site and said, oh, there's nothing wrong with it. But yet they drained all the wetlands down, they dug and they destroyed. This is all pretty much irreplaceable, and they continue to do so to this day. Now, if you look at the southeast corner, that's where he's presently digging, because he was denied to dig over at the 9034 address. Now, his access to that, he's crossing wetlands again and still destroying wetlands over there. And I just wanted to say, if it's in the best interest of this township, you guys should really be seriously considering what you guys are doing up here.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Good evening. My name's Carol Sampson, 6039 Point Turnbull Road. When you're, the organization fees for the WWTP authority, are you gonna have them publish the meeting so people can come to them?
Um, no, they, I mean, it's already organized and.
Yeah, I know it's organized, but, um, just like the DDA, you don't publish your meeting so people can attend and know what's going on.
That would be up to the, the, the new authority, once it's established. It's, uh, the date of it being established is probably gonna be January 1.
Okay.
But if they wanna have the meetings here, I have no problem with taping it for them.
Okay, then on 10/12, you have, and they're working on county parks and the beach park. Is that Pearl Beach Park?
No.
Oh, okay.
That's the county beach park.
And you said, and the beach park, so I don't know.
Oh, no.
The wording was, I didn't know if it was a Pearl Beach Park, too, or if it was just the county park. And I've seen a lot of questions, like, what's happening to the property on the side of Island Drive where Margaret Jeans used to be? What, can you explain?
No, we, or.
Clay Township don't know what's happening over there?
No. I know they cut some trees down. They don't have to get a permit or anything to do that.
Okay, and I was going through, um, the check report, and I noticed there's a lot of in-between meeting checks that are never approved or looked at by anybody that I know of. And I've noticed that all the Blue Cross has gone up, the health insurance has gone up tremendously towards the end here. And I'm wondering, did we hire new employees? Because usually the monthly premium's the same till the end of the year. So, is there a way that you can just, you know, let a?
If you wanna come in, we'll explain it to you, and I can't explain it to you right now in this form.
Okay, and then, um, has there been an answer to why the Clay Township paid $5,000 for Cindy Valentine's son for the hospital bills? But is there an answer to that?
Yes, and again, if you wanna come in, we'll explain it to you.
Well, I don't wanna come in. I want everybody to know the answer. I would like you to answer it here. I mean, we ask questions, but you can't.
This is public comments, so it's not questions and answers.
Oh, well, okay, well, you could comment on it, besides saying, come into the office. And then I noticed, too, on one of the journals, on 10/16, 36 checks were written. Checks number 37922 and 37923 were the last two checks written on 10/12. And then on check registry 11-2, and the dates are 10/19, 10/26 for the checks, and they're in-between checks again. And these two same checks, 37922 and 37923, are on this check register also. So, where's the balance of all this? How come, how come we have the same checks on this check register and the same checks on this check register? What, what kind of system is there that it doesn't show that you have duplicate checks or you have the same check writing again? How do you balance that with the checkbook, with the bank?
Oh, it's balanced. They, they do it, and our auditors double-check. But again, if you wanna come in, we can show you.
Okay.
I don't have the stuff here.
Okay, well, my comment is then is that hopefully that Clay Township will get a good system for.
No, we have a good system. We have a good system.
And so they don't have duplicate checks on duplicate different check registers. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Any more public comments? Hearing none. We'll, uh, continue on to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the board meeting minutes of 10/16:23, the Parks and Rec Conference for Cindy Babish that would be split with Ira Township, check reports for EFT, board approved on 10/16, payroll for October of 2023, and in-between meetings of 12, October 12th and November 2nd.
Support. Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion on any of those?
Well, you know, I have, still have the same question I have every time.
Okay, and you're gonna get the same answer.
Well, I mean, you said that you would give me what you did in, you know, which I got a list of what your additional duties are. But specifically, I think we owe the public, you know, what you guys are doing each week for this, or each month for this extra $3,000, not, not, not the whole list.
My supervisor's report.
But, I mean, everything, like, maybe Kristi, Cindy, and you could both put together a list. This is what I did to earn my $3,000 this month. You know, and, and I'm, granted, maybe some months it'll be more, that you'll do more, and some months it'll do less, so we'll take that into consideration, but, you know, the public wants to know month by month, and I, you know, seems like they deserve to have that. If you didn't wanna put the salary in all one lump sum, and you wanted to do it this way, I think it should be reported that way, and I can't vote yes until I get that, so. Just, just let, you know, how I.
Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone oppose?
Hmm, I'm opposed.
Okay, motion carries. Next, uh, new business. We have a ZBA appointment for Bonnie McInerney.
McInerney, McInerney.
Yeah, and, uh, instead of, she, she was a regular member on the ZBA. She's having some issues getting to some of the meetings. She asked if, uh, she could become an alternate. So, I'm recommending to the board that we reappoint her as an alternate. And henceforth, I will be looking for another ZBA, uh, member, uh, very soon to, uh, serve out as a general member of that board.
I'll make a motion to approve Bonnie McInerney as an alternate in appointment to the ZBA.
Support.
Okay, motion to support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. Uh, next we have, uh, planning commission reappointments of Chris Hiltonan and Kathy Schweckert. Do these in one motion, if you'd like.
I will. I'll make a motion to approve Chris Hilton and Kathy Schweckert. And Chris Hilton is a planning commissioner on the planning commission, and Kathy Schweckert is the planning chair or chairman.
Support.
Okay, a motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Uh, next, we're looking at a new, um, company to host our website, and I haven't been talking to them much myself. I know, uh, Cindy, you have more, so you wanna talk about it?
Uh, yeah, Kristi and I sat through a demo. It's just a little bit cleaner, it's, it's newer. It's, it's not as archaic as the one we have, makes it easier to update. The website we have, there are pages that are hidden behind pages that are hidden behind pages, so sometimes it's hard to update it. When you think you delete something or update it, it doesn't necessarily transpire over, so, um, considering the ease of updating this, it runs about the same price, if not, it might be a couple bucks cheaper, actually, um, than the current website we have. So Kristi and I thought that we would bring it to the board to see if they would like us to update with a new website that's a little bit cleaner.
The cost is relatively same, right?
Correct.
And, um, in this, they'll give us a new website, transfer all our information over.
What we want them to transfer over.
Yes.
Yes.
I think it's time for definite update. I did check out some of the, um, sample of the municipalities that they did, and I, I liked them, so.
What's, what's wrong with the old one, other than what you just stated? Anything else adverse?
It's hard to navigate. It's hard to get our employees, you know, for the department heads to update their own website. It's, the, the training is, um, almost something that they need to sit through annually from every time they update it, where this is just pretty straight, simple.
We got a very poor scorecard from, forget, one of the newspapers, saying our website was terrible, so I'm for it. Is it gonna be, if we need assistance later on, for them to help us with things? Are there extra costs involved, or is this it for the whole year?
Yep, says right on here, unlimited customer support.
Okay.
How can we be assured that all the information and documentation will be transferred over? Who's gonna monitor that?
We will internally. I'm sure if it's missing something, somebody will tell us.
Well, can you keep the old site?
Yeah, the old site will stay up until February, and then we have until February to design this, look it over, and make sure it's all there before this site actually goes live.
But can we, like, have them snapshot every page so that in case they transfer over, we lose something, it's still there? Can we have them do that?
That's typically part of it.
Like, okay, because we don't wanna lose any history or anything like that, right?
I'm sure all that other stuff will be saved anyways, I would imagine.
That's the first thing they do.
On the cloud or somewhere.
If you don't.
We'll be able to go back and look at history on the old website.
Until it's taken down, yeah.
Until it's taken down.
Yeah, once they switch over, they take it down and it's gone, so, you know, if somebody needs to.
We have a lot of, all the files for it. And so they do this stuff every day. So, entertain a motion, if.
I'll make a motion to approve the website hosting through MuniBit for $2,508, coming from line 101265855.
Or, yeah, motion and support.
And I'd just like to see them take our main website, maybe put it on a different URL, so we still have it, and nobody has to screenshot everything.
I agree.
They can do that, you know, they can.
Yeah.
They can forward it to a different URL and keep it.
I'm sure they'll be doing backups, I mean, we, we can call them and, and make sure of it.
Uh, you said February it's gonna be happening. Can't you postpone that and tell them?
If we wanna pay the old company another $2,500, we can keep it past February.
So if they just transfer it to a different URL, I mean, you just pay for the hosting of the URL, that's all, which is pretty cheap, 10 bucks a month or something. And then the site will still be there, and we can't make changes to it, but everything will be there.
I'd agree to that.
I don't know if we can ask them to do that, if that's, you know, a little extra cost for just the hosting of a different URL and purchasing a URL, it'd be less than $200, so.
Why don't we postpone that until we find a?
They can do that.
We have motion and support right now.
Do want them to get started on it, but.
So they did say that the, the price includes transferring all our data that we want, want to be transferred.
Which isn't much.
No, we really don't have a, a whole lot on there.
But, you know, you're saying that we wanna be transferred, and then all of us are really not involved in it, so if we have the old website.
Do you wanna be involved in it? I'm sure we can figure that out.
I'd be happy to help. I just want enough, I want it set up on another URL.
Everybody on this board will not be involved in bringing, doing our new website. I'll tell you that right now.
Well, if everything is gonna be there, then great, but you're saying, you keep saying, well, what we want to be there, and I think that's what's making Mark and I nervous.
Right.
Because we want everything that's there now to be there, right?
All the functionality of, of the old website will be on this new one.
Well, the functionality's not what I'm worried about, it's the data, you know? So as long as all the data's gonna be there, I'm all for it.
Okay.
It's maintaining the complete history is what I'm here for.
Yep. As far as all our minute meetings and minutes and, oh, yeah, well, we have all that, too, but I'm sure it's not, that won't be an issue.
Are they gonna be able to connect the videos so people can see them and not have to go on YouTube, or no?
I didn't ask them that.
I mean, it'd be nice, instead of having to go a different place, you know, if it was on the website.
Videos.
We'd have to pay more to Granicus for that, I think.
Yeah, might be additional costs.
Maybe there could just be a link to the YouTube site, you know?
Yep.
That shouldn't cost extra, but, you know, maybe we can amend the motion to save, approve with these questions getting answered or something.
We have a motion right now, so, and support.
Okay, the motion is to approve the new website with Manny Bit, how do you pronounce it?
Muni.
Muni Bit, for $209. MuniBit, for $209 a month, or what, what was it, the year?
$2,508 annual.
$2,508 annual, so.
Now you said this website has been used at other municipalities.
Yeah, yeah, we, gosh, I, I looked at about five different ones that they did.
How long have they been in existence?
You know how long they've been?
I don't know.
But, yeah, I mean, I liked what I saw. Hearing none. All in favor of, of going with MuniBit for our web design, in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Okay, motion passes. Record five to two. John, were you?
Yes.
Yay?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, office hours, it was what, three months ago, four months ago, we decided to change our office hours, and in that motion that we said we'd review it in November, and guess what, it's November. Our office hours used to be from 6:00 AM to, I mean, 5:00, 8:00, 8:00 AM, time change, man. 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and we slid everything earlier a half hour. Now we're open 7:30 AM to 5:30 PM. I have not received any, personally, any negative feedback from the change. I did, actually, I have gotten a lot of positive feedback from a few contractors and other people. And we, we, we checked the numbers from September 5th, when we made the change, to now, we had 23 customers at 7:30 AM to 8:00 PM.
7:30 AM to 8:00 AM.
Yes, whatever, yeah, what did I say?
8:00 PM.
Oh, yeah, no.
We figured.
8:00 AM, in that first half hour. And, and then we, we went back a year ago, and the same, the same dates, from 5:30 PM to 6:00 PM, we had 11 customers, so our customers is doubling what we're able to take in care of with that morning half hour compared to the evening half hour.
Excuse me, you think that number will change with the time segments that we have here?
Well, I, I know we'll have more people, and we, we get busier in December, right?
Yes, when we start collecting winter tax.
I did talk to a couple people that were in, and they said, honestly, they goes, "I'd rather stop, if I have time on my way into work, to pay a bill." Because when I'm driving home at night, this is the last place I want to stop, I'm tired, I just want to get home and get something to eat. So it's, it was more, for a couple people told me, that they're more apt to stop in the morning on their way into work versus their way home, coming home from work.
Were phone calls considered? Because, you know, you're just looking at people that came in, so phone calls too?
What did we get, four phone calls?
This, in this last 30 days, we had three phone calls between 5:30 and 6:00.
Yeah.
And before the hours changed, you know?
We had.
It wasn't many, I know.
I mean, people aren't going to call if they know we're closed, so, you know, I'm just wondering if there were more, but then.
When we ran the numbers, we actually had more calls later at night, when we would never be here, than we did during that 30-minute difference.
So between 5:30 and 6:00, you don't remember if there was 10, or there's three now?
No.
Okay.
Oh, were there complaints, anything?
I haven't, no, I haven't heard any. Have you?
No.
Nope.
No? So, I guess what we would like to do is make this permanent. So, entertain a motion, we can talk about it more.
I'll make a motion to make the permanent office hours 7:30 AM to 5:30 PM.
Support. Yeah, motion and support, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion to change our office hours, business hours, from 7:30 AM to 5:30 PM?
Correct.
Signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right, fire department, new hire, part-time EMT, Justin Higgins. Chief, want to come up? I assume that's Justin following you?
Good evening, guys.
Hello.
Good evening. I'd like permission from the Township Board of Trustees to hire a new part-time firefighter, Justin Harold Higgins. He's currently employed with Cabela's. He works in a fire, as fireman, or fire, firearms library specialist, and he's a manager, and he's also in sales. He's been employed since 2022. He's currently certified Michigan paramedic for the state of Michigan. We did conduct the interview. We also had his record checked, criminal and driving record through the police, our police department, and also I checked through the state on his paramedics license, and he is clear on all.
Can you get us any deals at Cabela's? I love that store. I probably bought a gun from you before.
I think you did, actually.
I think I did. I ask everyone and everybody this question. Do you know how to swim?
Like a fish.
All right.
I'm a freediver, actually.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Does anybody have any questions?
I'll make a motion to hire a part-time EMT, Justin Higgins, to the fire department.
Support.
Motion and support. No more questions, we got him on the hot seat.
Justin, how's your, your schedule with your current workload versus?
Flexible, actually.
The chief may need.
Because my management position there, it's actually pretty flexible.
Okay.
I can work an average of 32 to 40 hours there.
Yeah.
And honestly, it lives about a block away.
Oh, terrific.
So I have ample time to come over and learn some new skills, and actually be used in my community for the last, what, 13 years? I've been a paramedic and not working in our community at all. Been out, I've worked several different ERs, ORs, ICUs, three different ambulance companies, private companies over the years, learning all the experience that they had in their book of business, but haven't been practicing our backyard.
Okay.
Because I've been learning all the other skills that, you know, everybody else offers as well, so I like to offer them to our community, because I'm literally right next door, so.
Well, the fact that you're local is a huge feather in your cap, you know?
That's right.
We certainly like to hire within. So your other schedule, is it something that you can put out, like, monthly? Do you put out your availability, or can it help you, or how does that go?
They, they actually said they work with me on this project.
Okay.
Usually they get about two to three weeks notification on their scheduling. They said they will work anything around what we have here, so.
Great, so you can just work with the chief and?
Absolutely.
Dylan, where I need you?
Yep.
That's fantastic. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Sounds good. Any other questions for Justin, while we got him up? No? All right, well, we have motion and support, so all in favor of hiring Justin Higgins for our fire department, signify, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Congratulations, Justin.
Congratulations, Justin.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is Fire Department, our ESO reporting software, three-year agreement. Go ahead, Chief.
Our present reporting system that we have now is emergency reporting. They were bought up by ESO. It's a much larger company. They've been dealing with fire departments and EMS, along with hospitals and billing and report system, this ESO company. They approached me and asked, you know, what our, our plans were. All our records and all our data is in emergency reporting. Right now, they can transfer all our data and reports, past reports, over to their platform. What I'm afraid of, if I go to another company, if all that data's going to merge over into a new company. And that was there when I first came, I'm not sure how long it was there with the, the past chief. I know it's been there for, I've had it for five years, and I'm sure it's been there for the last seven or eight years, so. They have many options on it. They have the inventory, they have scheduling, hydrants, building inspections, also buildings, putting in the commercial buildings that we can go in, and pre-fire plan, we can put those in there, and if another department responds from the surrounding area, they can go into that system and get that pre-fire plan, locate where the nearest hydrant is. Now, Ira Township is going with it, Algonack's going with it, and so is Marine City. So we all have the same platform.
All our neighbors are going to be with this company also.
Yes.
So just so the board understands, year, year one, the cost will be $1,785. Year two is going to be 45, $4,565. And year three, it's going to be $7,974. And then it'll stay at that level, probably with, with increases, who knows after that?
Yes.
We do pay a little more than our neighbors do, because we have two fire stations, as opposed to their one, but other than that, I can't think of any other questions, so we'll have to be sure we, we get these numbers in our budget going forward, next couple of years.
What are you currently paying?
Excuse me?
What, what are you currently paying for emergency reporting?
Emergency reporting, we're paying about $255 a month.
So it, actually, year one is going to be cheaper for us.
That's $3,065 a year.
Yeah. First year, second year is going to cost us a little more, and then the third year will be double.
And there really aren't any alternatives that will, because they won't transfer things over, right?
Well, they could transfer it over, but is it going to be correct? And is it going to be the material that we had, or the data that we had? Because you have to have, keep reports for minimum seven years, correct, Cindy?
And we're signing a contract for three years, or, because they're doing three years with us, so we're signing a three-year contract?
Yes.
I mean, we talked about the website, and that we have everything in-house. Do you have everything in-house? Not necessarily, right? That's why you need the software?
Right, it's all in the cloud, too. This is all stored in the cloud, all our data.
So the transfer of documentation will be seamless with ESO?
Yes.
Since they're by any other company?
Right. And the other departments also had emergency reporting, and they went. I did get their quotes, we're a little bit higher than, I checked with St. Clair, we're $1,000 more than what St. Clair's paying. We're about $1,500 more than Marine City, and then Algonack, we're a little bit lower than Marine City.
Did they already make the transfer?
Yes, they did.
And it wouldn't fine?
Yep.
Okay.
So even though we have two fire stations, what are the report percentages compared to the, say, St. Clair Shores that has it? I mean, they have, they have more.
St. Clair, you mean? Right.
Well, it's also based on manpower. We have more employees than what the other departments have, so it's based on two stations and also Manning.
When you say we're a little more, like, what number are you, using the $1,700 number, or the $4,000 number, or the $7,900?
Yep.
So is Algonack and Ira Ben with this company, or are they?
They are with, they're with emergency reporting, and they were, of course, bought out by ESO, so they're just transferring their, theirs over.
They're in the same process we are?
Yes.
Okay.
I sat in a Zoom meeting in Marine City last week, and I, they were talking about their transfer and how they're going over and doing things.
Okay, anyone want to make a motion?
I have one more question. Oh, we can make a motion first.
Yeah, usually you should make the motion.
Yeah, you're right. You're right. Fellow trustees, I'll make a motion to support and approve the ESO software, three-year agreement, in the amount of $14,324.70. That'll be pulled from line item 206-760.
Support. Yeah, motion and support, what's your question?
Thank you. Chief, this is sort of related, and I, I think with ER phasing out, right?
Yes.
We don't really have a significant choice there, right?
Basically.
So I understand where and why this is going this way, but from a departmental standpoint, who's responsible for data entry on your reports of this nature?
Every firefighter.
Okay. Is that something you delegate?
Yes, they have to have their, they have to have their reports done at the end of each shift before they go home.
Okay, and so is it, it's a matter of logging on to an ESO site or an ER site in this case, right?
Yes.
Reporting, and then they log off, and that data's then stored?
We have to do two reports, if we have a medical report. We have to do a PCR, which is a state report for medical, and then we do a, a fire report, and that's sent to this, to FEMA, and then the state takes the fire reports from FEMA.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're required to do that, if we want to get grants, that's the other thing, too.
The fire reports that we see on a monthly basis from you, is that generated from ES?
Well, that's generated from ER, emergency reporting, but you'll get the same type of report every month from them.
Perfect.
I know it's all in the cloud, and I, I don't know if you've gotten any quotes from anybody else who's similar to this ESO. I mean, I know emergencies reporting is becoming ESO, so that's, you know, makes it more seamless, but do we have any cost comparisons with their competitors, or no?
I did not get any, no, I did not.
Are there many competitors?
There's about three, including ESO.
I mean, I just know that you work with this really tight budget, right? So, and that's kind of a big chunk, so I don't know if it would behoove us to see if it's really different, because, I mean, it's going from 3,000 to 8,000, just about, in a couple of years, yeah, right?
No, it's going from 3,000 to five.
First two years, it's about even.
Yeah, the first two years it's even, but the third year, it's 7,900.
We're looking at a three-year span, right? We're paying 33 or something, or 3,065, so that's 9G. Over the course of the next three years, we will pay nine grand if we stayed the course. If we upgrade, and it doesn't sound like we have much of a choice, we'll pay 14. So it's a $5,000 increase over a three-year span.
And then nine grand is, you don't know if there would be a price increase.
Right, over the course, of course, right, right.
You know, so.
Right.
Well, we're paying 3,060 now, so for three years, that's nine grand, and our next price is 14 grand for three years, so it is 5,000 more.
Amazing.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I, I just thought, you know, if it's not, and if it's not a rush, I mean, if we have to decide right away, I'll say yes, but if you had time to look at the other three competitors, it just might be worth it, because if everything's in the cloud, I guess we don't have to worry about the transition. I don't know, that's just an idea.
I, I guess, Chief, do you have a drop dead date on this?
Well, the other departments are going to this. I know Marine City is already starting their I know Marine City is already starting their transition. I know Algonac has and St. Clair is on their way of doing it too. So Ira's, Ira's doing theirs too.
Do you know if any of those got any other quotes from other?
When I called, I've got their quotes from what they got from ESO.
Right.
But they all pretty much went with.
Yeah.
ESO.
What's the timing on this then?
Well, it depends on when the state changes their, their reporting system for the, for medical reports. They could do it in January, they could do it in February.
Just an idea, you know, if you could ask with it before the next meeting, we could still decide November on the other three companies to see, I mean, it's substantial money.
No. No, I don't want to amend my motion.
That's, that's good, I'm good.
That is our department head.
Yep, that's his job.
And that's the information he came to us with.
Yep.
That's what he's looking for approval on and that's what I'm going to support.
All right, do we have any more discussion?
I just think it's worth looking at the competitors' pricing. I mean, you can have a chance to do that, so maybe it's something you didn't think of doing because everybody else did it. But we have no clue if we could be saving a lot, you know, a ton of money. I mean, what do you feel? You feel like it's not possible that it might be substantially cheaper with the other three competitors or?
I'm afraid that we're going to, we could lose the data that we have now. That's what I'm afraid of. I'm no, I'm guaranteed that everything that we have presently now will trans over, trans, trans over to ESO. You want me to check for another company? I'll gladly do that for you.
I mean, is it in the cloud, we couldn't lose it, right?
Well, I don't know what's going to happen with that, that platform. It's an ESO or it's a emergency reporting platform. They could shut it off tomorrow and I couldn't gain access to it.
So they're, they're putting it in the cloud for us and they could change it? They could cut it off?
Right.
Unlike a website that is a PDF, they also have their own file format. So it's not that that file format that everything is saved in would necessarily transfer over to a different platform.
Right.
So there's also that concern as well.
We have all the inventory that I've been putting in for the last five years, all the equipment that you've allowed me to purchase is in that program.
And a different company wouldn't necessarily be transferred over.
Right.
And we'd lose, you're guaranteed that with this company?
Yes.
Okay, we have motion and support to approve the contract with ESO software. Roll call vote please.
Kristi Hiltonen.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Chris Oregan.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Chief, I'll just need a copy of that contract once you sign it or initial it.
Yes.
All right, next we have to accept a ten thousand dollar grant that we got to purchase personnel safety equipment for the fire department. And how this grant works is we buy the stuff and then they will reimburse us. And I know we put in for the masks with the hoods and what else do we have?
Our personal thermal imaging cameras.
Yeah, personal, the thermal imaging cameras. So how this grant works, we have to buy the stuff and then we give them the receipts and then they will reimburse us.
Make a motion to approve accepting the Michigan Fire Grant in the amount of ten thousand dollars and purchasing the equipment designated of SCBA masks, hoods and thermal, personal thermal imaging cameras.
The party. Okay, a motion and support, any discussion on that? So we will be purchasing this equipment. No discussion, roll call vote please.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Chris Oregan.
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonen.
Yes.
All right, motion passes, good job, Chief, on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Do you know if there's a, much of a wait, lead time to get that?
The funding's in stack, so I can call tomorrow and we'll get it within the next week or two.
All right, and we'll submit the paperwork and get it refunded. Perfect, thank you. All right, that's it. Board member comments. Mark, you got anything for us?
The planning commission, we have a few, one of the items went up to St. Clair for approval and another one was approved on hours, operating hours for a restaurant over on Port Bumble. And there is no planning commission meeting in November as far as I'm aware of.
Okay, sounds good. Maureen?
There's a Harson's Island Transportation Authority meeting Saturday, November eleventh at ten thirty. The agenda will be, you know, posted soon. Want to welcome Justin Higgins. Thank you for serving the community. And I just wanted to ask, some people have been asking me, I'm, about the water ordinance. Are we sharing that with the public, what we're considering? Or should we post that on the website somewhere?
We can.
So people can see it? Because I saw some things on social media saying that we're keeping them in the dark. So, okay, good news for the public, that'll be out there for you to see. And on the county, on the wastewater treatment plant, do you, do you know when they're going to approve the South Water Authority?
I have not heard anything from the county.
Okay, so hopefully we'll have our meetings in December, but we don't know because if they don't approve it, we can't, right? Okay, so, all right. I think that's all I've got. Thank you very much.
John?
Welcome aboard to Justin. And kudos to our water department. You touched on it briefly, Artie.
Yeah.
They put that water line in on Columbine, about a thousand feet of water main. There's not a lot of water departments that do that anymore.
No.
And they saved the customers and the township thousands of dollars.
I estimate.
Good job to Lansing's crew.
Yeah, I think they saved us about fifty thousand dollars.
That's a ton of money.
On doing it in-house.
Yeah. It's not an easy chore.
Right, and they're, like you said, I don't know of any other water department in the county that would have taken.
There's not many.
Taken on that job, so. So probably more than fifty grand.
That's excellent.
Yay Lance.
So I know we got to, it's been under pressure, right Lance?
Yes, it has.
And you got to believe?
We chlorinated it and we're waiting to put back D samples to come back.
Yep, okay, sounds good. So we're almost there. So, and we have two more fire hydrants too. All right. Cindy?
Um, yeah, congratulations to Justin and welcome aboard. And for the third time, the fifty-two hundred dollars was a budget amendment to the Clerk's Department. It was not a check written to me. There was a four thousand dollar adjustment to the healthcare line for a check written to a third party for healthcare reimbursement. That's all I got.
Chris?
Yeah, I wanted to thank Chairperson Kathy Schweitzer for your planning commission role. You're certainly good at your job. I like the way your board runs and I thank you for throwing your name in the hat for reappointment again. I think you lead a good board there. I thank you for Chris Hiltonen, I think he's a strong community member for that board. I've got a couple of quick PSAs. It's a time of year where we need to close our foundational venting. After that strong wind today, I think most of the leaves are down. So gutters and downspouts should be cleaned before winter hits, okay? Because that water and ice will wreak havoc on them and it's way too heavy for the gutters to handle.
Make our list longer.
Trying to get them cleaned out. Coming this time of year, some personnel, people, community members, businesses, they look for opportunities for engagement donations. Couple of good ones, the Algonac Food Pantry is always a good one through Trinity. They'll take non-perishables, they'll take cash, money orders, checks. You can donate to the Algonac Dropbox, the Clay Dropbox, I think Chemical Bank Fifth Third and also North Star. So five really good options to support local hunger issues. Lastly, just a fun little fact, the Detroit Zoo is having their wild lights at the zoo starting Saturday, November twenty-fifth from five to ten PM. I don't know if you guys have ever done that, but it's pretty fun.
I've done Halloween there, but never the light.
It's pretty fun. It's a, it's a ton of lights and it's a cool thing to walk, you know, with your sweetie, with your family, whatever. It's, it's fun. So put it on your bucket list if you have some time this winter. That's all I have.
Chrissy?
We do have Goodfellows applications and we are starting our heavy ramp up for collections of hats, mittens, socks, unwrapped new toys, gift cards, anything that a teenager would like, like makeup or books, puzzles, any kind of thing like that, any kind of cash donations or check donations can be made out to the Goodfellows and we will collect all of that. And we are preparing our winter tax roll. We will be sending that off to the printer hopefully by the end of this week and the bills will be going out at the end of November. So the first day to pay winter tax is December first.
Okay. Congratulations, Justin. Welcome aboard. And also for Kathy and Chris for re-upping on the planning commission and Bonnie for ZBA. So all those boards, they do great jobs. Goodfellows, please support them. I know there's a, the paper days coming up here, I can't, I don't have the dates where they sell their papers and.
December second.
When is it?
December second.
December second, we're going to be hawking the papers. When's the Bowl-a-thon?
December third.
December third. Okay, at the Colony Bowl, two great events. And yeah, support them, no kid goes out, goes without a Christmas, but they do stuff all year long. And like always, if you're in the township, you're paying any bill, you can round up or kick a few more bucks in or do whatever you want and it all goes into the Goodfellows. And then I hear the girls ring their bell, ding ding ding, we get it, you know? And I think it's a dinner bell going off sometimes, so.
Start drooling.
Yeah, exactly. What's that pedal on, yeah? Change your batteries in your smoke alarms. We rolled back, so change your batteries. And if you have a hard time getting on a ladder or have a hard time getting batteries or can't afford one, need a new smoke alarm, call our fire department, we will be glad to do it for you. I know I get a little wobbly nowadays on ladders, so if that's the case with you, call our fire department. They're good at on ladders. And Justin will come in there and pop them in, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. What else do we have going on? I did want to mention, because there's been, you know, questions about healthcare. About, and healthcare is our, are one of our biggest expense minus infrastructure projects. And what we did about seven, eight years ago, we went with a plan with a high deductible and then were kind of self-insured to cover that deductible for the township. So if someone had something with the township would actually pay their deductible, that normally Blue Cross would pay. And that practice is averaged, it saved us a lot of money. We pay it through, it's called HRA, Health.
Reimbursement.
Reimbursement account. And that, that practice is averaged, saved us about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year for every year. In fact, they just did it all this past year. It saved us a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year by doing that instead of just having the low deductible plan that we agreed with all the collective bargaining agreements from a hundred years ago. And that's why, you know, you'll, you'll see a check cut to this person or that person from our HRA account, you know, for medical expenses.
The checks are, are not cut to HR, to individuals, they're cut back to the health, burnman flowers.
Okay, all right, I stand corrected there. But, and Jess, that's, I know it's a little confusing. We did this right when Obamacare kicked in and it saved us, I, I haven't done the math, but I, it's probably between eight hundred and a million dollars since it saved the township. And that's township-wide, you know, all our departments that have healthcare. So I just wanted to clarify on that. One cool thing, it was actually my fiance's idea. We started the VFW, our veterans, we all like to support our veterans. And she was in there doing a fundraiser along with Cindy Babish and they were, they were talking. They got the idea, they presented it to me and I put it out on social media about giving them a meal every Wednesday. And it's taken off, I don't have a fancy, there's a sheet or a website you can go and sign up. And the deal is you bring some kind of a dinner food, comfort food preferably, for about fifteen people. And you drop it off between three o'clock and five o'clock at the VFW. And so they get one good meal there a day or for that day. And they're really appreciative of it and it's a, it's a good program. I have, it's signup.com and if you just did a search on that for Wednesday VFW dinners. But if you get ahold of me, I can direct you to, to, to sign up. But it's been, people are signing up all the time now and it's, it's a cool program. I know someone, they brought sloppy joes over and I went over, popped my head in and they were enjoying them. And, you know, I took one to this one old guy and who's actually a World War II vet. And he was telling me, if you're, with sloppy joes, if you don't wear them, they aren't any good. So, but it's, it's a cool program and if you'd like to partake, get ahold of me and support our vets, our local vets. That's all I have. Be careful with the time change, it gets dark early. And other than that, have a good couple of weeks. One more motion?
adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, thanks for coming, everybody.